Good evening and welcome to the March Regular Meeting of the Board of Education. Joy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Mr. McCune?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Velter?
Mr. Geary?
Here.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And we will begin with recognitions and awards.
Good evening, I am thrilled to present our recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin our recognitions tonight with a business partner. I'd like to ask Heather Skunover from Community Development and Cindy Von Felt from the Aletha Public Schools Foundation to come forward to assist with this recognition. Tonight we recognize business partner Robert Brogdon Buick GMC. I'd like to ask Robert and Kathy Brogdon to come forward from the dealership to recognize. The Robert Brogdon Buick GMC dealership in Aletha has been a consistent partner with the Aletha Public Schools. They have donated to the Aletha Public Schools Foundation Women's Student Care Fund that supports students facing economic challenges in the home as well as numerous student scholarships. Staff from the dealership annually attend and support the fall State of the District Breakfast and Golf Tournament fundraising events. Recently, the dealership has supported the district activity and athletic programs by being a sponsor of the video boards, which allow events at the Aletha District Activity Center and the College Boulevard Activity Center to be seen on a large screen and for our graduates to be seen on a large screen as well at the high school ceremonies. Recently, the Robert Brogdon service staff partnered with the Aletha Advanced Technical Center. The manager and team assisted district staff and students with the prep work for the National Automotive Technicians Educational Foundation Accreditation Visit. We are so honored and grateful for your support of the Aletha Public Schools. Thank you. And next, we'd like to recognize Bennett Johnson, Heritage Elementary School Music Teacher. Bennett, if you could come forward along with Principal Tara Payton. Bennett has quite the support crew back there, so we'll have him stand up in a minute. Bennett was recently recognized as a winner of the prestigious Kansas Horizon Award. These awards are sponsored by the Kansas State Department of Education, recognize the exemplary work of teachers during their first year in the classroom. He was one of 32 teachers from across the state honored with this award. And we want your family and support crew to stand to be recognized as well. For our next recognition, we're going to recognize two students who earned perfect scores on the ACT. Would Andrea Shihi from Aletha East please come forward along with Principal Carrie Lane? And would Dylan Stanley from Aletha South please come forward with Principal Clint Andrea and Dylan each earned a perfect score of 36 on the ACT. Naturally, while the actual number of students earning a composite score of 36 varies from year to year, less than one-tenth of 1% of students taking the ACT earn this top score. Andrea is a member of the swim team, the Science Olympia Team, and French Honor Society, where she tutors and helps run French clubs in the local elementary schools. She's also a violinist in the Aletha East Orchestra and currently co-concertmaster in the Youth Symphony of Kansas City. Dylan is involved in the 21st Century Computer Science Academy, is an Eagle Scout, a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student, and has earned AP Scholars with honors. I know your families are here as well. We'd love for them to stand to be recognized as well. Thank you. And that actually concludes our recognitions today.
I did.
I forgot to tell you that, but you knew.
All right, we will move ahead to public comments.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board, and if a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask the speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotaped recorded as matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room, state your name and address.
And I know we have at least one, Shane Huang.
Thank you for allowing me to present today. My topic for my presentation is Homework Isn't Helpful. And the purpose of this presentation is for a little bit between an assignment for honors chemistry and something that I'd like to get, become more aware of. And, yeah. So Alfie, the author Alfie John states that homework is a reliable extinguisher of curiosity and said that the practice of homework assumes that only academic growth matters to the point of having kids work on that most of the school day isn't enough. The main concerns with this are that there isn't enough family time, students don't have enough long-term retention, they won't have enough critical thinking skills or social development, and will lack happiness, won't have as much success in life, and all this research has been focused more on quantity instead of quality of homework. Duke University made a study in 2006 about the amount of homework between these grades. Kindergarten through second usually gets 10 minutes, 10 to 20 minutes a night. Grades third through fifth get 30 to 60 minutes. Middle school can go up to 90 minutes, and high school can go from 90 to two and a half hours. This study has been pretty consistent throughout the years because I know that from personal experience that my older cousins have had homework loads like this, and they didn't get done with it till at least midnight for a majority of the nights. Josh Becker wrote statistics about which education systems in which countries have performed the best without homework. Finland has been first, South Korea has been second, and Japan is third. And the benefits from not having homework are more quality with family time, less academic and personal stress, higher academic achievements in school, and tie for extracurricular activities that will not lower academic achievements. And this is true nowadays because I also have cousins in the Philippines, and they don't have as much homework as we do in the U.S. like over here. And they've been learning more than two to three languages, and their academics have been really outstanding for their age level. Another thing I would like to address is that nearly six out of 10 students participate in extracurricular activities such as art, band, debate, drama, choir, clubs, orchestra, or any other sports because of homework. I've personally had to step away from some of these activities in order to have a better chance of success in the real world, as you would say. Forbes Magazine in 2019 posted that homework doesn't seem to be boosting of learning activities. Author Natalie Wexler went over many pros and cons of homework or no homework and mentioned that homework assignments do not always match what has been learned or what is being learned. Teachers could benefit being taught more effective ways to give homework or not to give homework. Many studies are showing opposing data about the effectiveness of homework is for all students from elementary through high school. America's devotion to homework practice comes from parents and teachers that grew up having homework, not rethinking the homework system, embracing pendulum swings and educational philosophies without questioning or evaluating the impact on students and the outcome from the burden of increasing amounts of homework. Basically, to summarize this, is that teachers usually give out students a great amount of homework without really thinking of the students' emotions, and even if they do ask, they don't often, it doesn't often make a difference. In 2013, Stanford University made a study that overloading students with homework causes too much stress and physical emotional health problems, a lack of balance in their lives, and alienation from society. Some better alternatives instead of homework are unique or individual group projects to be worked on in class or during a special time in school. For students who have completed all schoolwork by the end of the day, those students could be released early rather than being required to attend a study hall or seminar class. This is a positive reward for completing school, like work at school and during class time. In class practice quizzes with images like Kahoot, this makes learning more interesting for students of all backgrounds and abilities. Study partner could be done for certain students at certain grade levels, and teachers can assign pairs. The main message of this is that it's time to make education more positive, individualized and meaningful, and work does not need to be necessary in order for education to be successful. And that's my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huang. Can I just say I commend you because I'm sure you had a ton of options, right, for people that you could have presented this to. And so it takes a lot of courage and resiliency to come up in front of the board in a crowd and cameras and lights, so I just, I commend you for that. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Others wishing to address the board this evening. All right, seeing none, we will move along. Oh, Mr. Beveridge is going to be disappointed that he's not here for this. Elementary and Rising Program update, Dr. Yager.
I would be happy to have a session for Mr. Beveridge to catch him up on all this information.
I'm sure he will be taking you up on that.
All right, very good. Well, thanks for a little bit of time to just give you an update where we are with this exciting program that will be in place in our district next fall. I'm literally just going to kind of walk through a timeline of what's been accomplished and what our next steps look like as we prepare for a great experience for our students next year. So we have shared information at Kindergarten Roundup, and as a reminder, our immersion program next fall will be at Manchester Park Elementary and also Black Bob Elementary. Those two schools are getting ready to welcome that program to their schools. Information was shared with parents at Kindergarten Roundup, and we give parents lots and lots of information that day when they come about having their students come to Aletha for the first time, but one of the things we made sure to do was give them information about our immersion program moving forward. Over the last number of weeks, we've posted information on our district website, so our community would begin to have an awareness of what we're doing and some resources available for them. Months ago, like at the end of December, we started posting positions. One of the things that we knew for this program to be successful is we needed to find high-quality teachers to lead these classrooms. And so in December, those positions got posted, and our Human Resources Department team did an amazing job. If you remember, we were looking for two Spanish-speaking teachers who spoke Spanish as a native speaker, who also were certified to teach kindergarten, and so a very specific skill set. Our Human Resources Department, our recruiters did a terrific job. They gathered a pool of 14 people for Mr. Flintthorpe and the principals to sit and spend some time getting to know and interviewing. And one of the other things that I would say that was really helpful in that process is their team English-speaking teacher had already been identified at each of the schools as well, and so the English-speaking teacher, if you will, at each school also participated in the interview process. We know that in order for the program to be successful, those two teachers have to work in tandem to support the kids in the program moving forward, and so having them as part of the interview process was really important for us as well. So those folks are all on board and ready to go, so we're really excited about that. Last night, actually, we had our first parent night, so we're offering two parent nights for parents that just want to learn a little bit more about the program and what that will be like. You actually see a picture of my tweet that I sent from the parent night last night. We had almost 40 parents come last night, which was a terrific number. They had a lot of really great questions. Mike did a tremendous job of preparing kind of a video for them of what it looks like to be in an immersion classroom and the high level of engagement and energy and things like that, and then responded to their questions and told them about the program. A lot of their questions actually weren't about the program. They were more about as having an incoming kindergartner. How do I need to prepare my student to be in two different classrooms during the day? Do I need to have two backpacks, one backpack? Things like that that we expect, and similar questions that we hear from first-time kindergarten parents many times. But the night was great, lots of terrific information. We have some FAQs up on the website, so we actually documented all the questions that the parents asked us, and we're going to be updating some of our FAQs to get that information up on our website for information purposes as well. So a few other things that we're continuing to work on for that successful launch next fall. Learning Services staff is working hard right now to make sure that we have all the curriculum resources in place for these classrooms. You may remember that our biggest emphasis really is that students will have the same experience whether they're in the Spanish-speaking kindergarten classroom or the English-speaking kindergarten classroom, and so we'll have complimentary resources in both languages. And that was one of the things actually that parents asked us about, are you going to use the same resources in both classrooms? And so like in elementary, our math resource is called Eureka. So we'll have Eureka in Spanish in one room and Eureka in English in the other room. So kids will be learning the same content but vocabulary in two different languages. And so we're working on finalizing those pieces and getting those pieces together so they're ready as school starts next year. You may remember that we traveled to Utah and have been sucking all the information out of them that we possibly can because we were so impressed with the immersion model that they've had in place in their state. And we are working right now for an opportunity for the teachers who are going to be involved in this immersion program to spend time training with the teachers and the experts in Utah. And so they have kind of a conference every summer where they bring their very best together and have extended to us an offer for our teachers to go be part of that. And so they'll be there, again, just making sure that we equip them the very best we can for this to be successful. So that's being worked on right now as well. Our application for the immersion program closes on March 27th, and then communication with families will take place the next week. And so you may remember we're going to have a limited number of slots, and we're going to utilize a lottery kind of model to populate those classrooms, if you will, with kiddos from around the district. Right now, it's actually the next thing on there. When I put the presentation together, we had 82, we are up to 90. Right now, with kindergartners whose parents have indicated interest in the program, it's fairly balanced right now actually between Black Bob and Manchester Park. Both schools have a decent number of kiddos who attend their home attendance boundary, but we also have people who've indicated interest that don't live in those attendance boundaries as well. That was part of our goal in this, was to have this be available across our communities. So, you know, as we're sticking our toe into the water for the first time, we're in a really good spot, and the staff that we have on board, the four teachers who are going to do this work and lead this work for us couldn't be better positioned and fitted for this kind of thing, so we're really excited about that. Sean Bohan and Tricia put off the principals who are working with this as well. They were at our parent night last night, will be at our parent night again next week with the ability to answer lots and lots of questions about immersion, but also the opportunity to answer questions about their specific schools because one of the things parents are asking is if I would switch my kiddo to Manchester Park versus my neighborhood school, what's alike at Manchester Park? And so they're there and have the ability to answer some of those questions, too. So it's been terrific so far, and we're continuing to move forward and excited about things to come. So that's a really brief timeline update. Questions about any?
Questions?
What was the number again?
Right now, we're just like at 90. I think it's like 80 now.
You know, I mean, the cap or that we were...
You know, we're not sure yet. How about that for a great answer? So we are going to be very cognizant to not create class sizes that are so large that it becomes unmanageable for teachers. That's really important to us. We also know that we need to have classes, though, that are large enough that if we would have a couple of kids decide this isn't the right fit or move away, that we'll be able to sustain that immersion program moving forward. And so we'll look at that. And then the other thing we'll look at, too, is before we do our lottery, the number of folks who, the number of families who live within each school attendance area, how many seats that they will occupy, then compared to folks from out of the school attendance areas. So after we have the opportunity to look at everyone that's interested, it will be easier for us to kind of figure out, here's the numbers at each school.
That actually addresses my question, which is, are we going to reserve a certain number of placements for children that don't live in the attendance area?
Yes, yes.
And your future goal as far as the next two to three to five years, what does this look like?
So at these schools, the goal really is to bring on a new kindergarten class every year. So our hope is, and we have no reason to believe this won't be successful, but our hope would be that the kiddos who are in it next year move to first grade. So when they go to first grade, we'd establish a Spanish and English teaching partnership like we have in kindergarten, and then have a new class come in in kindergarten, and essentially just do that all the way up. So each year that we move forward, we'll have a new kindergarten class and move the grade level of kids to the next level. To answer your question? Yeah.
Great. Other questions? Thank you, Dr. Yager.
Great, thank you all.
Moving on, you'll see the consent agenda items. If there are no questions or items to be pulled out for further discussion, I entertain a motion.
I would move to approve consent items 5.01 through 5.02.
Second.
Okay. From a motion by Mr. McCune, a second by Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes. All right, moving on, actions, bids, contracts, and agreements. I know we've got a couple of items that are going to require a little bit of discussion and explanation, and you'll see those in Section 7 and Action Other, but I'd ask you if there are any questions on items in this section.
Could you just briefly talk about 6.02, the increase, and what that, is that real? Is there something specific? I saw that Aletha Northwest was referenced in there, but just like what that, it's going up from 200 or by $200,000, right?
It is. So Aletha Northwest, their existing corridors is the vinyl tile flooring, and they haven't had any of our residence flooring work done in that school. So we used the on-call to start that process of replacement. We started in their academic wing, and our process is to eventually get rid of everything in the corridors and go to residence flooring. So we started in their academic wing, and we used the on-call contract so we could work on nights and weekends and during the break hours as well, kind of away from the traditional bidding and scheduling of that project. So in addition to that, we did identify some additional needs for work orders and other buildings that we could do some residence flooring work in as well, so that's why we've...
Okay, so there are other buildings, I got you.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks.
Mr. Geary, just to further explain, this was one of the first times that we did, where we did like a unit cost contract and set a kind of a budget within a budget. We said, came to the board when we awarded that bid and said, we're going to set it a half a million dollars and we'll come back if we need more money. We've done enough projects, and Northwest is such a big project, we've hit that limit, we want to continue on. It's actually a three-year agreement with two options to renew with this company. So it's not that Aletha Northwest is $200,000 over budget, it's we've come back for additional authority.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Other questions? If not, I'd seek a motion.
I'd move to approve action items, bids, contracts, and agreements 6.01 through 6.06 as presented.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Mr. Geary, a second by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the aforementioned Action Other section, 7.01, Approval of Bond Resolution. Mr. Hutchinson, do you want to...
Yes, we have a unique opportunity to do some refinancing on some outstanding bonds. We've done this throughout the years as part of our plan of finance, and there aren't many issues left to refinance. And actually, when we sold these, you can tell that through the 2013 and 2016 A Series, we assumed that we were at rock bottom and would never be able to refinance these, and the markets have proven us wrong. We have an opportunity to save about $347,000 on the 13 bonds and $3.6 million on the 16A bonds. The 13A bonds average at about 3.16% is their interest rate, and the 16s are at 4%. That 3.16 is going to become an average of 2.13, that 4% is going to become an average of 2.4, and that's what's generating that savings. It's not that we will pocket that savings, we will actually kind of accelerate the bonds so that we can pay them off earlier, so it really doesn't change that curve that I always talk about, and we'll start talking about again in the coming months. I won't get into the weeds, but it's kind of a special type of arrangement called a Cinderella refunding. We're actually going to sell some taxable bonds that sit in an escrow till the call date of our old bonds, and it pays them off and converts to non-taxable. So it's somewhat unique for school districts, but there were some changes in regulations, IRS, and federal statutes that have gotten rid of the traditional refunding bonds that we used to do in the past. Bottom line, great opportunity for the school district.
Questions for Mr. Hutchinson on that?
Did you mention how much we are saving potentially?
We will be saving approximately $4 million between the two. This will take an additional action by you. You have to authorize us to proceed. These are placed with, we have bank bidders, we will have to kind of negotiate with them because part of this process is to put that money in an escrow, as I said. Well, rates have done some interesting things in the last week, so we assumed a certain rate. It's down here now. That means they probably have to pay us a little more interest on the bonds, but we can negotiate that and bring it back to you in a couple weeks.
If there are no other questions, I'd seek a motion to approve.
I would move to approve 7.01 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes. All right, 7.02, land sale to Aletha Health. I'm actually going to recuse myself as I'm on the Aletha Med Board, so...
I will also be recusing myself at this point. Even though I don't vote, I'm going to step out.
So this is my opportunity?
So we're going to, is there any discussion amongst this 7.02 land sale, which is to Aletha Health, which sits right potentially in front of Paul McRaeville?
Nope.
All right, if not, then I'd entertain a motion to...
I would move to approve 7.02 as presented.
Second.
Second.
Right. Motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Boyd.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right. Section eight, future action items, you can see those listed out there, quite a few. So if you have any questions, as always, I would urge you to get those to Mr. Allison so that he can get you back answers before next meeting. Written information, capital outlay resolution, land sale and head start directors reports. So we have had an opportunity to take a look at that. Section 10, topics for discussion. Board, any comments? I would just say that on Monday morning, we had the opportunity to have breakfast with the Kansas Teacher of the Year finalists and our own Amy Hillman. And I know Mr. Beveridge and I both thought that what a way to start a Monday. You know, they went around and just the eight of them talked about the word that sort of describes their passion. And to see these just awesome educators, so excited to not only be here in Alatha and get to see all the great things that we do, but to talk about the things that they're passionate about was really inspiring on a Monday morning. I am not a morning person, but if I could start every Monday like that, that would be fantastic. And also so that the board knows, I think, one of the things that, I don't know if it surprised me, but I was really pleased with was, you know, we presented to them sort of the outlines of our strategic plan and the portrait of a graduate. And the comments were really positive and the way that we explicitly talk about things like inclusivity and resilience and we have them in our strategic plan, I think we gave them something to maybe take back to their districts and think about. So just wanted to say what a great opportunity that was. So anyone else?
I'd probably just make a plea to everybody to make sure that they're reaching out to their legislators. There's a lot of very important issues coming up and coming out of the education committees in both the House and Senate that please pay attention to because there's a lot of things that are going to affect us if they go one way or the other. So again, I just encourage everybody to make sure that they're reaching out to their representatives or Senate folks to make sure they're, you've been heard.
Well done. All right. Moving along, superintendent comments, Mr. Allison.
Thank you. I've got a few items for you this evening. The first is just to say thank you to our high school staffs and administrators and students who helped host the eighth grade transition day yesterday. So we had over 2,000 eighth grade students who had an opportunity to spend a part of the day in the high school that they'll be attending next year. So it's really fantastic to see the student groups and clubs and just how all that took place and to welcome those new students and to make them feel comfortable with that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. So a lot of work and planning, both at the middle school and high school level to get that done. And I think it was a great success. You may be seeing some construction if you're going by either of our stadiums and the scoreboards are in process. So if everything goes as scheduled and weather behaves, we will have the video boards up and ready to go for graduation. So we're excited about that. And, you know, we could only have done that with the support of a number of community partners and their advertising on the scoreboard. So I think you'll be happy to see them and we've had great response and support, so we could do that. So we're looking forward to that. The last item may take me just a little bit because I want to talk some about the COVID-19 virus. You can't turn on the radio, television, pick up a paper or any other publication where that isn't front page news. So I want to explain how schools and how we process through something like this. We rely on the CDC, the State Health Department and the Johnson County Health Department, and that's the guidance that we follow. So at this point in time, all three of them are giving us guidance. You'll be able to look on our website at alathaschools.org/covid19 and see all the CDC documents and everything listed there. What they are recommending for schools is for us to make sure we're continuing to follow our virus cleaning and protocols for infectious disease. This is something we do on a yearly basis. It's flu season. That involves all the touch points that we clean on a daily basis, monitoring student illness. When we reach 5% in a building, we have a step up process that we use and some particular equipment that helps us be able to cover an entire building. And we're also reporting those illnesses at certain points to the Johnson County Health Department. They're all recommending that we remind our students and staff and community about the precautions you take, whether it's for COVID-19 or the flu or a common cold. We're trying to reinforce that. Our buildings will be putting up some extra hand washing signs, just reminding, best thing you could do is wash your hands, 20 seconds. It's the friction of the soap and those types of things underneath your nails. Sneezing and coughing, let's not do that on other people. And just those basic common sense aspects, don't touch your eyes, nose and mouth. Being able to stay home when you're sick. Don't bring the opportunity to spread that virus to school. When you use tissue paper to make sure you're throwing that in the trash and then we can dispose of that properly. And then our cleaning procedures. We are in constant communication with them. We've had two webinars this week because this is a novel virus. It is still time and research are going to give us more details, but we do follow the specific guidance that they give us. At this point in time, they, there are no travel restrictions or advisories in the United States. There are five countries that the CDC has issued warnings for, but none in the United States. So as you see on the agenda for our next board meeting, we have some student travel and trips. We'll continue to monitor that. We're being told there's no reason for concern at this point. Of course, as things change, we get different advisement, we will, we will look at that. Of course, a parent has that opportunity and right to decide that their child may not travel to Bloomington, Indiana for a field trip. Or we've got the Computer Science Academy going to Rolla, Missouri in April. So that, we'll monitor that as we go, we'll communicate with parents, but it's the guidance by those groups that we will continue to follow. Big question I get is what about school closings? Again, that will be done by the Health Department. That's not a decision we will make. Can't say that the Assistant Director for the CDC that kind of surprised schools earlier in the last week or so saying, contact your local school to talk about their plan. We have an infectious disease plan in place. Again, that's a decision that Johnson County Health would help us make and to talk about what does that mean for students and staff. We've had conversations as we have as part of our infectious disease plan, but until things progress, that's a what if. What are we, what are we looking at? When does it occur? How long might that be? The idea of being able to provide virtual schooling for all 30,000 plus students in our district is probably not realistic. The number of families that may not have internet connection, even with middle and high school being one to one, how's that going to be monitored? If they have an internet connection, does it have enough bandwidth to be able to utilize videos and those types of things? So a lot of that will be, we'll monitor, we'll adjust, we'll communicate with our community as those things change and we get better information. It is, of course, something we're very vigilant about and concerned about, but we're not panicked about. We'll deal with that as we need to, as the situation continues to develop. One of the factors of this virus that, as you're probably all well aware of, they don't know if this will have any type of cyclical effect based on weather that the typical flu virus has. So this may be something that we're talking about in May, or it could be in August or September, just depending on what happens in this country. But like I said, we want folks to be informed. We will continue to communicate. We will do our due diligence and work with the appropriate health agencies that we need to. And again, on our website at alathaschools.org/covid19, you'll see CDC flyers. And as we get more information and updates, we'll continue to add. So it's a, it's a good place to be able to go and get the most up to date information and see what we're receiving and why we'll take the precautions and do what we need to do. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
I do have a quick question. In the event that there isn't a consensus amongst those three agencies, whose guidance will we follow?
That's a good question. My understanding is it would be first and foremost for us with the Kansas Department of Health, that that's who legally has jurisdiction with us. But the, I can't see that the Kansas Department of Health and Johnson County Health will vary. They're all communicating, working closely. I know the CDC is kind of the lead point for that. And there, it's a couple of times a day I'm receiving updates. Johnson County Health is serving as kind of our main point. So they're, they're working with those two and then filtering it and getting the information to us. And it's, it truly is, every four to six hours, we get an update. Not that status has changed, but just making us aware if there's more, if there's additional materials for us to be able to look at or guidance provided. And it will be fluid as more and more citizens are confirmed to have the virus, I'm sure things will change somewhat, but that's our understanding and how we'll follow that chain of command.
Very good. Other questions?
That concludes my comments for tonight.
Okay. And my understanding is we do not require an executive session?
We do not.
We are adjourned.